To call together the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado. For December seventh, twenty twenty. We have two, two items on our agenda tonight, the city council equity and and implicit bias training is item number one, and the Wadsworth Construction Management. Scenario or back briefing is item number two. As we usually do, I'd like to start our meeting tonight with citizen comment, you may, if you were a citizen or resident here, you may comment on any item that's on our agenda tonight, now is the time to do that. On the Zoom format, we will, if you will raise your hand and that's we will call on you and bring you into the meeting and the raise your hand function is in the middle of the screen. In the participant, if you if you click on the participant icon at the bottom of that next screen, you will find the raise your hands function. And or you may call in and we will bring you into the meeting, so I'm going to go to Mary Ann to see if Michelle to see if we have anyone with their hands raised that would like to speak at tonight's meeting.
Mayor, we do not have anyone with their hand raised. However, we do have one phone that is logged in, so I will unmute and see if they're interested in.
Okay, if you were if you were on the telephone and would like to comment on today's or tonight's agenda item one or two, now is your opportunity. If you would like to, please unmute yourself and speak up and we'll bring you into the meeting. Or if there's anyone else that would like to join us on the Zoom format, please use the raise your hand function, anybody new, Ms. Schelling? Give it one more, one more pass.
No, there's nobody new.
Okay, then we will close our our citizens' right to comment, Ms. Hoppy?
Sorry for the interruption, Mr. Mayor, I would hope that we could Councilor Nosler Beck is trying to get in, she's having issues. Linking in, so I hope that we can hold for just two seconds before we move on to the topic, so she can join us.
We certainly can, thank you for bringing that to my attention, we'll we'll sort of mark time for just a minute or two and hope that she's able to join us for the next agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, we do have a hand that is raised now.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and and take that comment, if you would like to introduce yourself, please give us your first name and your last name, and if you would spell your last name and give us your address, then you'll have three minutes to comment tonight and our mayor pro tem is our timekeeper.
Hi, it's Val, I'm just trying to get into the meeting.
We're glad to recognize you to be here. Thank you for, thank you for joining us, are you, are you able to get in now, are you going to join us on the telephone? Perhaps I lost her.
Yeah, it looks like she's gone.
Okay.
Me, I'm one, three, zero, three, three, I don't know what's going on, but.
Okay, anyway, that looks like a familiar area code, it's nice to have you here. So for the record, we will either we have all of our counselors here tonight, and I want to thank you all for joining us hundred percent attendance, great, great evening. So let us go to our first item, this is our city council equity and and implicit bias training, we have a special guest with us tonight, and I'm going to go to Mary Ann Schilling to introduce our guest and continue on with this item.
Great, thank you, good evening, Mayor and members of City Council, I'm Mary Ann Schilling, Assistant to the City Manager. Tonight, we have Dr. Rose Marie Allen here to facilitate an implicit bias training with City Council. You may recall that in September, City Council provided consensus to move forward with this training as part of its larger effort to address race and equity in the community. The goal of this training, as proposed by Wheat Ridge for Equity, is to understand and recognize patterns of thinking that perpetuate discrimination and to mitigate personal biases. The process agenda for this evening has been provided in your council packet. The facilitator this evening, Dr. Allen, is currently an Associate Professor in the School of Education at Metropolitan State University at Denver. Her classes are focused on ensuring teachers are aware of how issues of equity, privilege, and power impact teaching practices. She has experienced training police departments and is considered a national expert on implicit bias and culturally responsive practices. So I'll now turn it over to Dr. Allen to begin the training.
Thank you all so much and thank you for being here. I'd like to also thank you for your amazing work, especially your work around race, racism, and bias. I am going to get started, thank you Honorable Mayor and City Council meetings for just taking your evening and being open to this conversation. So today, we're tonight, we're going to be talking about implicit bias and microaggressions. And just some basic meeting norms. It's one is to exhibit respect, empathy, and compassion, and this isn't everything we do, not just for this meeting, and to assume positive intent. And to practice what we call soul and education, and that is before you say anything, before you respond to that kind of gut level response, is to be silent, observe, understand, and listen. And listen for understanding and above all, be nice, be kind, and speak the truth in love. This conversation is sensitive. I don't believe in shaming or blaming or any of that, I believe we're all in this together. You're gonna learn about me, a lot about me tonight because I share. And I share the good, bad, and ugly because I think there's power in telling our stories. I don't ever present myself as the perfect anti-bias, anti-racist person because every day I learn and almost every day I make a mistake and I take corrective action. So as we go through the this conversation, I'm going to ask you to stay engaged. And that means to remain morally, emotionally, and intellectually engaged in the in the dialogue. And I may say some things that cause you to experience some discomfort. And it's inevitable, just stay there and experience that, just make a commitment to bring issues to the open, feel free to ask me any questions at all. Speak your truth. So be open about your thoughts and feelings and not saying what you think other people want to hear. That's where the growth occurs. And we're not going to solve all the world's problems today around race and equity, so expect and accept non-closure. And this can be really tough because so many times we want to fix it. And especially people who are in positions of power, you you enter these positions because you want to make a difference and you want to fix things, but this will be a process. So let's talk. Let's talk about first implicit bias. And this is a tough one because we really believe that we see and treat everyone as equals. But science tells us what we know is that there are hidden unknown biases that influence how we perceive people and how we treat them. Let's define implicit bias. Implicit bias is a mental process that results in how we feel about people based on how we perceive their difference. It can be based on race, age, appearance, height, attractiveness. In any way and in every way that we perceive people as different from us, we open the doors for implicit bias. And it's this unconscious process that we really don't know we're engaging in, and it's based on negative biases that have developed over the course of our lifetime. And I said earlier that we could have biases against anything. But today, we're really going to talk about racial bias. So these, these biases develop very early. What we know is that by the time children are two years old, they have the same, they prefer the same race caregivers, by the time they're six, they have the same level of implicit bias as their families, as their family members. But how does, how does this happen? How does it happen so young? I want you first to imagine that your core that place right here between your navel and your breastbone, the core, imagine that as a recording device. And imagine that everything you've ever experienced is recorded. Everything you've heard, smelled, experienced, listened to, everything is recorded, the problem is you don't know what's on your recording. You pick up things and you have no idea where they come from. Just imagine that your caregiver, your mom or someone else is carrying you at four months old, how many of you have children? On the council, alright, so imagine you carrying that that baby at four months old, or you were carried at four months old. So your caregiver is carrying you and all of a sudden come comes a dog running down the street, a big, ferocious looking dog. This dog is about to attack, it's bearing its teeth, it's barking, your caregiver is terrified. Your caregiver holds you very tightly and starts kicking and screaming at the dog, the dog is barking, and it's a very traumatic experience. But you're four months old. And you don't remember that. However, at twenty-four years old, you might find that you are absolutely terrified of dogs. You don't like them, if a dog isn't on the leash, you freak out, you don't know why this happens. And if no one told you about that incident, you don't have anything to relate it back to, but that bias was developed when you were four months old and you don't know it. So many things happen over the course of our lifetimes that we're not aware of, the messages that we pick up, but they live there and they live on that recording. And that recording is where implicit bias lives. And it supports stereotypes. So implicit bias resides in our unconscious minds, and some researchers believe that's the part of the brain that's outside of our direct control, which means we have to work really hard to bring it to the conscious level. This yellow area right here is one of my favorites. It says unconscious attitudes are less egalitarian than we explicitly think about race. And all this is saying is that we all believe we are better than this. We all believe we're better than this because we want to be better than this, no one walks around proudly saying, hey, I'm biased, there are some people that I might have some issues with, no one wants to believe that. But the reality is we're all biased, we didn't ask for it, we don't want it, it's like an inheritance that someone gave us that you'd rather throw back. It's like breathing biased air and drinking biased water, we can't help it. And we didn't cause it, but we can all work together to bring it to the surface to eradicate it. But our refusal to talk about and confront issues of race actually reinforces bias. And that's, that could be counterintuitive to some people because there are some people who believe the more you talk about race, you know, the more you're race baiting, the worse it is, but that's not true at all. The more we talk about it, the more that we can address it. So our job is to understand the causes of implicit racial bias and do the intentional work that is going to take to bring it to the conscious level. And then we can mitigate the negative consequences of it. Now I have a graphic that I love to use, many of you are aware of the ladder of inference. And I use this because it creates a wonderful graphic to show how quickly we engage in implicit bias. And this ladder, you climb it like you would any ladder, and I'm so thankful I talked my husband out of putting the lights, the Christmas lights up because I didn't want my seventy-one-year-old husband on a ladder this year, for the first time, he agreed to let the professionals do it, thank goodness. So you used to climb this ladder, first rung, I select data from what I observed. Then the second rung, once you select the data, then you add meaning to the data you selected. And the meaning that you add is based on your own cultural and personal experiences. That's all you know. But this is also where we begin to make stuff up. We're basing it on what we know, not on what's really happening. And then you start to make assumptions based on the meaning that you added, you draw conclusions, adopt beliefs about the world or that incident, and you take actions based on your beliefs. And this happens in milliseconds. You have no idea you're doing this, but I believe that this is one of those throwback kind of reflective reflexive processes that kept us safe during our, our, our days of living in the cave, that it kept us safe so we can categorize things and know where danger was. But now it's used to really impact how we treat other people. And this process of the ladder of inference helps us to make this thinking visible. So let me give you an example. The observable data. Rose Marie walked right in and she didn't speak to me. Now, did you know that speaking speaking is cultural? Some of you were taught to speak when you walk in a room. And some of you were taught that you don't interrupt or make yourself the center of attention and you kind of wait for an opening. Can you imagine the cultural conflict between those two things? Those two ways of being, now I was taught explicitly taught to speak when I walk into a room. So if I walk into my mom's house and she's sitting around with her friends talking, not only must I speak, but I must hug each one. Hello and hug and hello and hug, so that's the way I was brought up. Now, some of you were brought up, when you walk into that situation that you don't interrupt, those are grown folks talking. You know, you kind of wait for an opening and some, some of you, it depends on the situation. So let's go up this ladder of inference, I select data. Rose Marie rushed right past me without even speaking. And now I'm going to add my own personal and cultural meaning to that. And you know what that is now? Did you see her? She walked right into this meeting and didn't even speak, she sat down like we were not there and started shuffling her papers like we didn't matter at all. And then I'm going to make assumptions, you know what, she thinks she's better than us. Here she is, the mayor pro tem, she's so important that she doesn't even look around the room to see who's here, not that you really do that, man. And then I draw conclusions based on my belief, she'll never treat us fairly. Because she didn't even bother to speak. Can you see the cultural disconnects and how fast we can go up that ladder? Now, how many of you were taught to speak when you walk in a room? And how many of you were like, no, you kind of can't make yourself small and you don't see, so imagine the conflict that can occur. When someone walks in and they don't speak, it's amazing to me, I can tell who was raised which way by the way they enter meetings late. Those who were raised to speak when they walk into a room, even when they're late, even with their Starbucks, they can't walk in and just go sit down, they're like all of that, and those who were raised to just make themselves smaller and to be quiet and not interrupt, they look at you like you're crazy. Like you're already late and now you're gonna walk in here and make a scene and start waving at people, so be aware of that. Let's use another one. You select data, oh gosh, this staff member, this council member, this person is always late, we're gonna talk about cultural time later. This person's always late. And now you're gonna add your own personal and cultural meaning. Now, some of you on the council being on time means being fifteen minutes early. Some of you pride yourselves for getting there right on the dot. You sit there on that Zoom meeting and you wait till eleven fifty-nine and as soon as it turns twelve o'clock, you press that button like yay, I'm on time. And then there are some of you who figure it's seven nine, but you know, nine is as long as I keep there five or ten after, I'm good. So just imagine the cultural conflict, so this staff member is always late. And this is a person who fifteen minutes early is on time. So they said they have no respect for my time. Because the person who believes that on time is fifteen minutes early, they expect at the strike of twelve for that meeting to start. Because they've already been there fifteen minutes. So if you come in five minutes late, they've been waiting twenty minutes, you see why that could be an irritant? So that person has no respect at all for my time. And then I'm gonna make assumptions, I don't think they're taking this job seriously. Or I don't think that they really want to meet, do they know how important my time is? And then you draw conclusions based on your belief, I'm not sure they're gonna be successful in this position, I'm not gonna invest that much time in them because they didn't even respect my time. And I just don't have time for this, and we go up that ladder just like that, one more example. Observable data. They didn't respond to my idea. You ever plan your wonderful idea? And if you come to City Council, ready, you've been planning this idea, just how you're gonna present it, you just can't wait. And then it falls dead, no one pays attention, like, oh, okay. And then you add your own personal and cultural meaning. Oh, I know why they didn't respond, it's because I'm a woman. That's why, you know what? You make assumptions, the voices of men are valued over the voices of women here. You know what, I saw them, I'm, I said that, and then the minute a man said it, then all of a sudden it was a great idea. And then you draw conclusions, this place is sexist, I'm not gonna bother working hard because it's not gonna be recognized anyway. Do you know you go up this ladder three or four times a day? Depending on who you talk to, who you meet, how you meet them? And only do you go up the ladder with the people you work with, with your constituents. You go up the ladder with the people you live with. How many of you say, yeah, I can see that? You know, it depends on how you feel, what mood you're in. We got a new puppy. My husband took, he measured the crate that we have because we wanted one upstairs, went to PetSmart and came back with a smaller crate. I went straight up that ladder, did you forget you measured it, what was wrong with you, why couldn't you, you know, all of that? You just didn't care, you got there and you didn't pay attention, you must have forgotten your list, whatever. And, but I didn't confront, I just said, oh, this one's a little smaller. He goes, you know, I was thinking that the other crate might be too big for him as a puppy. And I read that you need to separate it so they don't think they can, you know, eat there and toilet there, and it made sense. But again, we go right up that ladder. The reality is, we are all biased. Even you. Even me. I have been doing this work for years. And Valerie has heard this story, but I'm gonna share it with you because I believe in storytelling. But my most shameful and difficult to reconcile with incident of implicit bias happened a few years ago. It happened in Washington DC, my son was attending school there, he was at Howard University, anyone familiar with Washington DC and that area? So you know historically that area around Howard is really was historically really dangerous area. So we live here in Lone Tree and, I mean, it's a place where you rarely lock your doors, the police department had to send out a bulletin last year, so please stop leaving your purse on the seat when you go to Safeway. I mean, you just really feel very, very safe here. And my son grew up here and he never had to worry about his physical safety or anything like that, so when he went to Washington DC, we were terrified because he just didn't know the big city. But he did very well, and on the university campus is just a cocoon of safety. It's amazing, but between his sophomore and junior year, he wanted to move off campus. Scary, now implicit bias is bound to show up at times of stress and fear. Those are triggers, stress and fear, so talk about stressful, he wants to move off campus, this boy, he's a man, he even had a PowerPoint presentation showing us all the money we were gonna save and all the benefits and all of that, so how could you say no? But once we said yes, I went into mama bear mode, I flew down, started looking at places, went back, came back home, looked online and, and, and just did everything I could to make sure he was in the safest place. So we found a wonderful five-bedroom home that he would share with four graduate students, which was perfect. He met them, they met him, they loved each other, we're ready to put the deposit down. But you know that mommy thing in you that says, oh, I need to go check it out, I wanna see the area for myself, I wanna see the route he walked to school because we didn't want him to take his car, and I wanna meet the people. Now, I have something called sensory integration processing disorder. If you've ever heard of it, and it's the way that your body takes in sensory information, makes sense of it and and uses it. So for instance, if you had a ceramic stove top and you walked by it, you don't see that it's on, but you're, you can feel the heat, you know what I mean? So if you walk by this stove and you feel the heat, your brain takes in that information and says the stove is on and then you move away from it, that's the way sensory integration works. Anyway, the way that shows up for me is the way I get lost. Now, when I get lost, I get really lost. I mean, hyperventilating, disoriented, don't know where I am in space, don't tell me the mountains are on the west because that makes no sense to me, I'm just lost in space, that'll make sense in a minute. But anyway, I get to DC, put the address in my GPS, and I'm driving to this house, and I know I'm in the right place because right as I'm about to turn left, I see the pink house, so this is the right street, yay, I made it, I turn left, I pull up and I'm just about to park, pull in to park in front of the house. And as I pull in to park, I look over and standing on the porch of the house next door is a black man. A very large, rather dark black man. He has on jeans and a white t-shirt, he wasn't sagging because he had a belt on, but his pants were down low. And I took one look at him and my first thought was this place is too dangerous, my son cannot live here. And my second thought, now this is a millisecond, my second thought was, I hope the housing office is open because I have to go get his dorm room back. And my third thought was what the heck just happened? I caught myself. What happened? And then all of this self-talk, did you just look at a black man and decide this neighborhood was too dangerous for your black son? And what was really troublesome is that that black man literally looked like my husband, literally. I just couldn't believe I did it, and I'm just confused, you know, that, that kind of disorientation, like I just looked at this black man, this is what I fight against, my, this is my life's work. I was so shocked and so ashamed and so unworthy that I put my hands on the steering wheel, put my head down and sobbed. I don't know if you've ever had this feeling of just being unworthy, like how did I do this? I'm not even worthy to do this work, and I'm just crying my little heart out, beating myself up, and then all of a sudden it hit me that I've been sitting here a long time. Because I looked over and there's the guy looking like, and then we made eye contact. And he looked and he saw me crying and he runs down the stairs and I'm thinking, oh crap, oh crap, oh crap, and then for a minute I thought, all I have to do is drive off, if I leave, he doesn't know me, I'm in a rental car, he doesn't, he will never know who I am. But I didn't leave, and I did what I'm going to ask each of you to do when this happens to you. Not if, but when, because we'll do it. I stayed, I stayed and I thought, okay, just face it. Okay, and the guys at the window like, are you okay, and I thought, okay, crap. I need an excuse, I need an excuse, so I fixed myself up and I got out of the car, he goes, ma'am, are you okay, why are you crying? And I said, um, um, I'm lost. I think I'm lost and I have sensory integration processing disorder, and when I get lost, I get really, really lost, and he's just going, calm down. He says, I know what sensory integration disorder is. And I'm like, you do, another bias. You do, and I'm thinking, well, how would you know that? And I said, oh, you do, he goes, yes, he goes, where are you trying to go? And I said, I'm looking for this address, I couldn't come up with a lie, and I said, I'm looking for this address, he goes, ma'am, you're right here, and I'm like, oh, thank you. So I cleaned myself up and I said, you know, my son's a student at Howard and he's gonna be living here, are you a student at Howard as well, and he goes, oh, kind of. I said, well, what do you mean, kind of, either you are, you aren't. He said, well, I'm a resident of hospital, I attend the medical school. Like, oh. I would have missed that. But you know, the reality is, is that he didn't have to be a future doctor. He could have been a faculty member, a Walmart worker, a janitor, he could have been homeless. But the reality is that what he shouldn't have been was deemed dangerous just because he was a black man standing on his porch. And I did that, I did it. And I have to own And I did that. I did it. And I have to own that I did it. And not only did I have to own that I did it, but I had to own that I was capable of it. If I can be honest with you, I didn't think I was. Because I absolutely love and adore black men. I've not had a negative experience with one. Why can I say that? Cause my dad was one. My dad, the most amazing man I ever knew. My husband, my son, my brother, my uncles. So I've not had negative experiences with black men. So where did that come from? It comes from this. It comes from bias. We're all capable of this. Because no matter how wonderful my experiences have been, that bias was still there. So what I just wanna say and you'll hear me say it a million times, aware is halfway there. Once we're aware of it, then we're halfway there. Because I'll tell you what this could have looked like. I could have made that left turn, pulled in and looked over and thought, oh, you know, this place doesn't feel safe. I don't want my son to live here. I don't know why. I just have a feeling. And I could have driven off, got his dorm room back and not explored what happened. So if aware is halfway there, how do we get to the other side? And what I want you all to do is notice and wonder why. Notice. Because I stopped and I noticed, okay, this doesn't feel safe. What is it? Wonder why? And who would have thought in a million years that it was a bias against black man that made me not feel like that place was safe? And I was able to explore it. And the other thing we have to do is talk about it. We have to talk about these issues, which means we have to talk about race. Not fun, not comfortable, not always easy. Why, why not? Why isn't it easy? Because I could sit here and talk about being black and about my black son and I can say the mayor pro tem is a white woman. But somehow you go, oh, what does that feel like? We wanna be politically correct. And I said that, but she may not be. She may not identify as that. So I could have just made a mistake, but that's the chance we take when we talk about it. But we don't want to offend anybody. We've been, become so politically correct that we don't know what to say, when to say it, how to say it, how to identify. We just don't know. We don't know if we say Hispanic, Latino, Latinx, Asian. I have a girlfriend who's Chinese and she goes, Rosemarie, I'm Chinese. I'm like, yeah, I, I know. She goes, no, really, I'm Chinese. My mom is Chinese, my dad, my grandparents, my great grandparents. I said, I know, tell me more. She said, how did I become Asian? Who decided I was Asian? And I thought, oh, now you really messed me up. Cause now I'm hesitant to say Asian. We don't know what to say. But guess what? We're all in the same boat. We're all here together. Let me just show you my family. This is my husband, that big black guy looking like the guy who was standing on the porch. Now, he was born in nineteen forty-nine. He turned seventy-one last month. I was born in nineteen fifty-nine, so I turned sixty-one this year. When my husband was born in nineteen forty-nine, can anyone guess the race that's listed on his birth certificate? He's in the segregated South in nineteen forty-nine. That's close. That's close. Um, city manager, Patrick, that's close. Anyone else wanna take a guess?
Colored.
Colored. Who said, yes, colored. My husband is colored. Every now and then I'll say, come on over here, big old colored boy. Now, I can say that. You can't. And it's really important to know what you can and cannot say, right? Now, he's colored. And Patrick, you're right about the Negro. Ten years later, I was a Negro. Now, twenty-four years after I was born, my daughter is, what do you think?
An American?
Nope, she's black. And my son is African-American. And that's one family living today. Do you see why we're so confused? I mean, I grew up saying Oriental rather than Asian, anybody else? And now you don't dare say that. There are some things you learn that you have to unlearn. Things are always changing. When I grew up, queer was a really bad word for people who were part of the LGBTQIA plus. Queer, you didn't say that. I was on a plane one day before COVID. And a guy was sitting next to me with a tutu on stockings, a black nail paint and a hat. And someone walked by, he was in aisle seat. I was in the window, at the window seat. And someone walked by and pointed to him and said, hey queer? And he just sat up taller and straighter. And I'm sitting here thinking, what was that? And I was just so fascinated by it. So after he got settled and I said, hey, I'm Rosemarie and I do this equity work. And if you don't mind, I have a question about equity that I'd love to explore with you, if that's okay. He goes, yeah, shoot. And I said, a person passed by you and said, hey queer? And you seem to be so proud. And he said, it's always good to be seen. How awesome. And I said, but I'm just curious, how did she know you were queer? And he turned around and faced me and his hat said queer, right? Queer, like, okay, now I know. But then we, we started talking. And I said, you know, when I grew up, queer was a really derogatory term. How is it used today? He says, oh, we reclaim that word. And I said, well, if, can I use the word? You know, I remember I said, you have to know what you can and cannot say. She said queer. He goes, yeah, but she's queer too. And I, I said, I'd ask you how you can tell, but I'm sure you can. And I said, well, I'm not. So can I say queer? He goes, well, it really depends on the relationship. If you have a close relationship with someone, then you can use that word. But we were able to talk about it. So we have to be able to talk about these things, but you also have to have a relationship or establish even in the few minutes we're sharing the same role on an airplane, establish a level of trust. But we don't know what to say. And, and when we talk about race, it feels personal too. It's scary. If you're white, you feel like you're gonna be blamed. All that white shame that you are the reason, especially white men. You're the reason for all the ills in society today. Everything is because of you. Or you're afraid if you're a person of color that you'll be accused of playing the race card. You know, here you go playing the race card. And people get really defensive. I had someone say to me, Rosemarie, you know what? I didn't own slaves. She said, I've never been a slave owner. I said, that's great. Cause guess what? I've never been a slave. So somehow we've inherited all of this. So what do we do about it? It's not your fault. It's not my fault. What can we do? And what we can do is talk about it. We can't pretend like it doesn't exist. Even though many of us were taught not to talk about race. Many of us were taught not to see race, but to see the character of a person. Um, and if you're taught that way, talking about race could be very, very uncomfortable. And then we want to engage in these colorblind policies. I don't see race. I just see people. I'm an educator. So you hear teachers say, I don't see race. I just see children. But you know what? We see race. To say we don't see race is just a false face lie. Because every one of you noticed that I was a black woman when you've logged onto Zoom. You notice. It's perfectly okay to notice. It's not okay to treat me differently in a negative way because of it. But you can notice. I mean, I noticed the blondes and the grays and the beards and the balds and you notice. And there's nothing wrong because that's the beauty of diversity. It's okay to see people. So when we engage in colorblind ideology, then we don't address issues of equity. We can pretend like all of the data that we have is not really true. And then we promote this fallacy or this illusion that people are beyond bias and racism. That's not real. And then we could ignore the disparities and then we can blame all of the ills on people and communities of color. And that's what we can't afford to do. So seek grace, seek color. Because you know what? People want to be seen. They want to feel valued and honored and respected in all of their diverse ways. And I want you to know me. I want you to trust me. I want you to see me. I wanna be able to talk about my experiences and your experiences. That's really important. But if you say I don't see race and I say, you know, council members, I have to tell you. I had that incident the other day. This actually happened to my son not long ago. His, his, um, what do you call it? Headlight went out in his car. He calls and goes, mom, my headlight went out. And I think the auto shop is gonna be closed before I could get there. And it was dusk. And I said, well, son, where are you? And he was leaving work. And I said, do you think you can make it home before it's really dark? He goes, I don't think so. And I said, well, just park your car and your dad will, you know, help you do the headlight repair tomorrow. He goes, well, I was about to go to my girlfriend's house. I said, no. Park your car. If you go to your girlfriend's house, take an Uber. And he goes, mom. And I said, son, I just need you to come home. And that's when it hit him. But the fear that I have as a black mom, for my son's headlight to be out and for him to be stopped is real to me. And if that's not your experience, it's not okay to say, oh, you're overreacting. Oh, that's what, what do you, why are you so afraid? All police officers are not bad. I'm not saying any of that. But what I'm saying is that I had a real fear that something could go wrong. When you look at the statistics, a lot of those deaths were just traffic stops. And that's real to me. That's real to me as a black mother of a black son. And as city council members, if someone says that to you, you have to hear them. And when you see them and value them and honor and respect them, then you can acknowledge that. And we're gonna talk about how to respond to that too, if you're just not sure. Um, but not only must we not be colorblind, we can't be culture blind. Now, for the purpose of this workshop, culture is defined as our ways of being, just our ways of doing things. So first thing is culture. Everyone has one. Now in the nineteen eighties, when we began to talk about diversity and multiculturalism, we made a huge mistake. Because we defined everything that, everything is diverse and multicultural and left white people out. I think that's why some of those initiatives failed. Because white people cannot see themselves in the multicultural and diversity talk. When we talk about diversity and inclusion, it includes everybody. And what happened when we left white people out of this discussion, they started to believe they didn't have a culture. I had a student, because they have to identify their culture and everything. She goes, Rosemarie, I'm just white. You know, baseball, apple pie. That's it. That's what I am. But we're all cultural beings that's not tied to our race. For instance, um, I'm just sharing this. I'm not pushing it on anyone. But I'm a Christian and I was taught to be evenly yoked, which means to marry another Christian. And I did. Nobody told me what kind of Christian to marry. Now, I grew up in a holy ghost, holy row of Pentecostal, hallelujah, thank you, Jesus, stand up and shout church. And then I married an Episcopalian. Oh my, talk about cultural differences. Oh my goodness, I remember the first time I went to church with him. First shocker, they started at nine and ended at ten. Holy moly, never saw that before in the history of all my church going. And then they were quiet as church mice. I mean, nobody talked. The minister said something I agreed with and I went to raise my hand and say amen. And my husband, put it down. Like, no, not here. And then I said, well, when do you pray? He goes, honey, we prayed. Remember the book of common prayer? It's like, oh. You read your prayer. He comes to my church, the pastor might get some holy oil, put it in the middle of your head and push back and hallelujah, you to, into heaven. Cultural differences, even in religion. So everyone has a culture. It's their way of being. White people must recognize they too have a culture, our ways of being. Even culture is how you celebrate Christmas that's coming up, if you celebrate. Do you go to midnight mass? Open your gifts at midnight? Does Santa come the next morning? You open your gifts? What kind of food do you eat? Do you celebrate Hanukkah or Ramadan? And it's just the way we are. And when we recognize ourselves as cultural beings, then we can avoid othering people. I'm normal, they're other. Our ways of being are acceptable across the board. So let's talk about our culture. What is it? It's our beliefs and our perceptions, our personal identities and our cultural practices. How we are, what we celebrate, how we celebrate, what we value. Let's take a quick, quick look at this. Some of you are maybe familiar with the iceberg theory of culture. And this is very similar, but Zaretta Hammond, who wrote the book, Culture Responsive Practices in the Brain. She encouraged us to use a tree because a tree have roots, roots run deep. And when we think about a tree, they have leaves and we're reminded that leaves change, they die, they fall off, they're renewed. Because culture is static. So here's my husband, the Episcopalian, here I am, Pentecostal. So we've been married a long time, thirty-five years or so. How do we now use religion? How do we practice religion at our home? And we found the AME Church, the African Methodist Episcopal Church. It had parts of his upbringing, parts of my upbringing. And now we have a whole new cultural practice. And it's so funny because my children were raised in the AME Church. And when they go other places, it was like, they didn't do, you know, because we're really rigid, the summary of the decalogue and this and that and blah, blah, blah. I said, they didn't do that part. They didn't do that part. It's like, people celebrate and worship differently, but cultural is static. But we're comfortable with this kind of surface culture. We're comfortable talking about the way people dress and the music and the food. But then we have the, that surface culture, then we have the shallow culture. And we rarely talk about this level of culture. But these are things like concepts of time. Remember we talked about how some people perceive time earlier? Time is cultural. There are whole communities that do not see time the way that Americans see time. There are people who believe that time is relational. Has anyone ever gone to, um, like an Muslim wedding, Afghan, like from Afghanistan? If the invitation says six, don't bother getting there till seven thirty. It's just not gonna start on time. Had anybody ever been to Hawaii? Anyone? You notice island time? I remember trying to get a Diet Coke at Burger King in Hawaii. It took twenty-five minutes. No kidding. Anybody from the south, Alabama, Georgia? These are people who are not gonna speed up for you. I went to Columbus, Georgia in a hurry because I snuck out of the house to go get something from McDonald's because I didn't like the food. And I raced into McDonald's. Hi, may I have a cheeseburger, Diet Coke and large fries? The lady goes, hey. How you doing? I said, I'm fine, but I need a cheeseburger, Diet Coke and large fries. She goes, you're not from around here, are you? I said, no ma'am, I'm not, but I'm in a hurry. Can I have that cheeseburger, large fries and Diet Coke? She goes, well, where are you from? They wanna talk to you and hear an answer. Time is different. It only took me a minute or two for me to realize that she wasn't gonna speed up for me. And I slowed down to her. But concepts of time, you may work with communities and especially communities of color where time is relational. You ever work with some people who are always late? Who never apologize for being late? Because they don't think they're late. Just like some of you are fifteen minutes early because you think that's on time. These people are fifteen minutes late and still feel they're on time. Nine-ish. You didn't mean nine. You know, as long as I get there before nine fifteen, I'm still on time. And some of you are probably wondering, how so? Let me give you an example. How many of you drive down I-25 and you see that speed limit that says sixty-five? How many of you believe with your whole heart that you can drive seventy before you should get stopped? Some of you believe you could drive eighty. So in that case, sixty-five doesn't mean sixty-five. It means seventy and for some of you seventy-five. The same way for some people, nine o'clock doesn't mean nine o'clock. It means nine-ten. So if the police officer stops you and you were going seventy and the speed limit says sixty-five, you would be very upset. Officer, are you kidding? I was going five min, five miles over. Are you kidding me? That's the same way people feel about time. Really? I got here five after nine and you're saying I'm late? I'm not late. I'm five minutes late after. So keep that in mind next time you're working with communities that seem to be late. Personal space. Some people share and some don't. Some people have a military background and this is mine and this is yours and don't touch mine because it belongs to me. And then some people are from families that are very cooperative and they share everything. I married a guy from a military family. I'm from a family of eight kids. We didn't own anything, nothing. So when he said, when our first three months of marriage, he goes, why do you always hang your towel on my side of the rack? We have sides? I didn't know we had sides. Okay, tell me which one is your side? I mean, just a whole different orientation, personal space, rules of conduct. How do we behave? Facial expressions. How many of you have that mom who can give you a look from across the room? And you know to stop. Yes, and non-verbal communication. Then at the roots, we rarely talk about habits and assumptions, understanding our values, our judgments, the nature of friendships. Friendships are serious. You may have constituents who really believe in fictive kinship. That's strong in my family and culture. All of my best friends are my children's aunties. And they're my best friend's children and my children are cousins. And that is so, such a strong belief. They can never date or marry. And that is so, such a strong belief, they can never date or marry. So if you have someone that comes in and, and she goes, well, my auntie and this is my cousin, and you're trying to figure out how they're related, don't worry about it, you won't. Because if this is what they practice, it's all over the place. It's the same way with blended families. Some blended families call, family members call their parents step-parent or stepsisters, and some don't. Or what about families who have different fathers, half, two of half siblings? You call people what they call themselves. And that's really, really serious. I have four half siblings after my dad passed and. But we didn't have never said half. They're my whole siblings. So you wanna be respectful of the nature of friendships and relationships. Tone of voice. My family is very quiet. Anybody hear from a quiet family? Or anybody hear from a loud expressive family? I see those heads shaking. My husband's family is loud and expressive. And the first time I went to dinner, I experienced it as violent and couldn't wait to leave. It's like, they just yell at each other all the time, and it was really difficult. So that's also cultural. So you may have constituents after COVID is over who come up to testify. Have you ever had that who are loud and you think they're angry? And you calm down, they may not be angry, they may just be passionate. So be aware of that. Attitude towards elders, some are revered, some are not. Um, concept of cleanliness, who makes the decisions, patterns of group decision making? I worked in an environment where most of my families were from Mexico, and I learned very early that abuelita, abuela, grandma ruled. If I wanted something done, you talk to grandma. So that was really a learning experience for me. If there's a preference for competition or cooperation and problem solving. And the reason I want you to be aware of these elements of culture is because this is also where implicit bias lives. I'm going to email this to um, to Mary Ann, if you'd like a copy. And it's just an elements of culture sheet. And you, you go across this line to kind of find, find the disconnects between you and your constituents. For instance, um, discipline. What are your values growing up? So my values growing up is that we were spanked, not only by your parents, but any adult could spank you if you were out of line. My values now, I don't believe children should be spanked. I believe that we use discipline as a teaching method. So what, and this is school, but what does the city of Wheat Ridge believe? We believe that we funded, we use a lot of public funds for childcare to teach them. How to teach children pro-social behaviors. I'm just making stuff up now. But how does that differ from your coach, from your constituents? You may have constituents who believe that I'm not trying to baby my kids, they need discipline and consequences. And then where's the disconnect between your beliefs and your constituents' beliefs? So I'll create this form and adapt it for the city. If you wanna use it, just so you can identify where your cultural disconnects are between you and your constituents. So, we talked about implicit bias. Now we're gonna spend a little bit of time, Mary Ann, please let me know when I'm running out of time, because I've already lost track. So, um, act implicit bias, we spoke about. Now we're gonna talk about the manifestation of implicit bias, which is microaggressions. And microaggressions are brief, daily, commonplace behavioral and verbal indignities that are suffered. By marginalized groups, and they can be towards any marginalized group. And um, Dr. Sue describes it as little cutting remarks and action that takes place on a regular basis. And they come in three forms. And there are micro insults, I'm sorry, now I'm starting to go too fast, let me slow down, micro insults, micro invalidations and micro assaults. So the first is a micro insult, and this could be conscious or subconscious, it could be verbal or nonverbal. But it conveys a negative message to people. Let me show you an example. And you're gonna have to listen very carefully. Did anyone pick up on the microaggression? Yes.
Didn't use doctor, your title.
Right, did not use my title. Now, I don't demand that people call me doctor. But in a professional situation, this was the American Psychological Association. Introduced Walter as Doctor Gilliam and then me as Rosemary. Now, I don't think this was race racial. I believe it was sexist. Uh, even on campus, the men are usually called Doctor so-and-so, and the women are called by their first name. And when they call you doctor, they usually call you Doctor Rosemary. I don't know what that is, but I do believe that it was, it, it was a sexist comment more than a racial comment. And what's really interesting, we're gonna talk about this later, is that Walter picked up on it. And he didn't know what to do with it, and then the moment passed. Watch his face when it comes up. Um, and we talked about that afterwards, he goes, I didn't know what to say. I'm so sorry, but the moment passed, and we're gonna talk about what you can do in those moments. So you can interrupt microaggressions. And I'm like, what, did he really say that? And then you have the micro invalidations, and these are dismissive statements. Of a marginalized person's expressed feelings about an action that they felt was discriminatory. So that's like if um, if, if a person comes to you and say, you know, um, councilman. I don't feel safe in this neighborhood because I'm always teased or. I'm, I'm always told that I don't have a right to speak Spanish in Wheat Ridge, and I don't feel safe. A microaggression would be if you say, I don't believe that. That's dismissing that person's expressed feelings about being discriminated against. And I'll tell you, this is one of the most common forms of microaggression. And I believe our, our dismissive statements are not intended to hurt. But I believe that we don't wanna believe it. You don't wanna believe that anyone in your community would treat people this way. So we say things like, are you sure? Are you sure it's because you're black? Are you sure it's because you're a woman? Well, maybe they wanted to talk to you and didn't understand the language, and we make all these excuses. Um, I'll just give you a tip. If you hear this, fight that urge to dismiss it. And then you can say, I'm sorry that happened to you. That's one of the best responses. That doesn't mean you believe it or support it, or I'm sorry. I'm sorry that you feel that way, or I can't imagine what that must be like. Rather than dismissing it, because I'll tell you, by the time a person says something is racist. They have gone through a lot in their heads. I mean, this is, this is the self-talk you go through. Did they just do that? Did they say that? Well, maybe they didn't say that. Am I being sensitive? Maybe they meant something else. Surely they're not ignoring me because I'm black, but I see everybody else being weighted on in here. I wonder why they haven't waited on us. Those three couples came in after us. Is it because we're the only black people in here? I'm not sure if that's the reason why. I'm just gonna wait and see if, how they treat the Hispanic couple over here. You go through all of this process of elimination. So by the time you say. They didn't treat me well because I was black, you've already doubted yourself. And what you need at that point is to be heard. That's just heard. Oh my gosh, that couldn't have felt good. I can't imagine what it felt like to be there twenty minutes and other people were, were um, taken care of before you. So be careful not to engage in that. Here is an example. Won't see here, the sculpture scaffold, a piece representing historic executions sanctioned by the US government. Including the hangings in Minneapolis of thirty-eight Dakotas. At the end of the tribe's war with the United States in eighteen sixty-two. Native American leaders protested the sculpture's inclusion, leading to the museum's decision to remove it.
Is that caving to public pressure because you're worried about that publicity? No, I think it's being responsive to the Dakota community here and what it represented.
So the microaggression, did you cave in to public pressure? And I loved her response, no, I was being responsive to the Dakota community. So when someone tells you that you've offended them, your first job is to stop. This isn't the time to go, oh, you're being so sensitive, that's not what I meant by this. Oh, I can't say anything. No, just, just stop. Just don't do it. I was um, at a school, I ran the lab school at Front Range Community College for years. And we had this sunk-in area in the middle of the classroom that we called the Kiva. And let's play on the Kiva, let's meet in the Kiva, you can do this in the Kiva. And then one of my indigenous students came. And she goes, Rosemary, can I, can I tell you something? I said, sure, what is it? She said, um, the Kiva is a very sacred place for my people. And every time I hear you say, let's play the Kiva, it's just, I have a visceral reaction to it, because it just feels so disrespectful. To this holy sacred place for my community. I said, thank you so much for letting me know. We're gonna have a class meeting. I stopped everything. Hey, everyone, let's come over here and meet in the circle, because I just learned something new. What teacher? I just learned that Akiva is a place where indigenous people, Native Americans. Consider it very holy and very sacred. And we shouldn't call this place Akiva, cuz do you think it's holy? No. Do you think it's sacred and special? No. Then we need to find a new name. And my challenging student Connor, I kinda said, I got a name. Well, what is it Connor? Let's call it the pit. From that moment on, it became the pit. No questions. How easy was that? To just call it something else. So when someone tells you that you, there, there's a microaggression, just stop. It's like. Um, anyone here have a name that's hard to pronounce, that people always mispronounce or shorten? Yeah, so I'm Rosemary, that's my name, Rosemary. And I really don't like it when people call me Rose, cuz that's what my dad called me, you know, what my aunts and uncles called. You call me Rosemary, that Rose is for my family. And I'm just shocked at how people would get upset. It's all, hey, Rose, it's like, actually, Rosemary. Well, I didn't mean anything. It's like, me either, just like you know what my name is, you know, so we wanna be careful of that. So a micro assault, this is the third type of microaggression, and this is intentional. This is meant to hurt and meant to call, cause damage. This is when you call people derogatory names. When you use slurs against people, or when you make them feel. That harm is gonna come to them as well, threats. Here's an example, some of you have seen this. And that's when you get to the brunt of the assault. It was bad enough, I'm gonna call the cops, but the intentional harm is, well, I'm gonna tell them an African-American man threatening my life. Because she knew the danger of calling and saying a black man is threatening me, it ups the ante. Now, all of a sudden, it's escalated, and that's the harm and danger of a micro aggra-aggression. And there's very, there's a fine line between a microaggression and a macroaggression. So being aware of that. I do wanna say to you all that there are some movements to not use the term microaggression. You will hear people talk about wounds to the heart or wounds to the soul, or soul wounds, things like that, but. Um, for the purpose of this workshop and because we're familiar with it, I still use microaggressions. So. Microaggressions, and this is where it starts to get a little uncomfortable, but I think that you kinda trust me a little bit now, that I'm not gonna blame or shame. But microaggressions tend to occur most in what's called white spaces. So what's a white space? A white space are spaces that are overwhelmingly and historically white. Neighborhoods, schools, universities, workplaces. And these spaces have historically been perceived as off limits to people of color. They've not lived there or worked there or attended school there as often. And people of color experience acute disrespect during which they're reminded they don't belong. So what might this look like?
I really don't care.
Okay.
Because you don't belong in this development.
Yeah.
Okay. What's your name? Okay, where do you live?
Why would we tell you any of this?
Okay, not a problem. I'm gonna call the gate and have you all arrested.
Okay.
You do not deserve to be in here.
Okay. So, not only do you not belong here, but you don't deserve to be here. This may seem extreme, but it happens quite often. Like I said earlier, I live in Longtree, I live in a very affluent part of Longtree. My son has lived here since he was four years old. We live in the busiest corner in our development. I can't tell you how many times my own neighbors called the police on him. A suspicious black male walking through the neighborhood. Finally, the Longtree Police Department and I had to work out a plan, because I just told them, I do not want my son stopped. I don't want him stopped. I know you have a job to do, but you know the neighbors are calling. You cannot be the, a conduit for this, because they're afraid, because they don't recognize him. And I don't want my son to have this fear of walking in his own neighborhood. And we were able to work it out, but what worked better than even our, the agreement we had with the police. That we sent a picture, they'll know who he is, and they came to know us pretty well. But um, we have a neighborhood watch committee. And shortly after the last time they called the police, I just replied all and said, this is Clarence. He, he is now six-one, he goes to school with your children. Many of you have called the police on him because he's walking through his neighborhood. And he even said, the neighbors act like they're afraid of him and never speak to him. I just thought you'd know, because we don't want him stopped by the police anymore. That was actually the last time it happened. At, my son was sixteen at the time. I didn't tell him I did that, and he goes, Mom, something weird is going on in the neighborhood. And I said, what, what's happening? He goes, all the neighbors are going, hi Clarence, hi Clarence. They started speaking to him. I just, it, it was wild, but it was very safe. And this actually happened at the time of the Trayvon Martin incident, so it was very scary for us. So what does this look like? We have to ask, and it says campaign, I'm sorry, is, is Wheat Ridge a white space? This is the question that you have to ask as councilmen, council people. I don't know a lot about Wheat, Wheat Ridge. Was it historically white and then became more diverse? Are historically marginalized people experiencing acute disrespect? Are you hearing those things? Are they overpoliced? Are they reminded that they don't belong? And these are the questions that you have to ask, and I'll tell you, you are halfway there. Because you passed a resolution. You've already said that you are going to focus on this issue. What does it look like? There, there are daily messages that convey some people don't belong, and it's people making fun of their names, shortening their names. Mispronouncing them on purpose. I don't know if you've seen the clip, I, I'm on channel nine, usually on Thursday mornings, and we did a. Whole session on um, a segment on a senator that kept mispronouncing Kamala's name. You know, Kamala, Kamala, Kumala, who knows? That's conveys that you don't belong here, that you're somehow othered. So that's one of the ways it shows up. Ignoring ideas by some while expressing the same ideas when expressed by others. Wheat Ridge is a um, a historical city where people have been there a long time. You have generations of people who stay there, and you have lots of people who want to keep Wheat Ridge the same way. Do their voices have more value? Over other voices who may want to see development? Whose ideas are embraced and whose aren't? Do we favor some groups over others? Historically, we do. Those who have the money, those who contribute to your camp-campaign. So we have to be aware of that. We sometimes call on people while ignoring others, based on race, gender, language, class. We treat people differently because of the way they look, the clothes they wear, their hairstyles. Um, this is so prevalent that there are eight states in our country. That passed laws that says you can't discriminate against people because of the way they wear, they wear their hair. I was a government employee for years. I never wore my hair curly like this. I always wore my hair straight, because I did not want to appear too ethnic. And I didn't want people to, to see me in any other way than professional. Do we assign roles based on race or gender? Do we stereotype black and Latino wom-women? Do we stereotype black and Latino wom- um women? Latino women as too loud, too sassy, too angry? And silence them because when they're passionate, we think they're angry? Do we misinterpret people's actions and ways of being and passion as defiant? These are the questions we have to ask ourselves. Are we creating and upholding that white space? But the bottom line is that microaggressions occur. And many times they occur in ways that are not intentional. But I want you to know that your intent does not diminish the impact. And when someone, a constituent, a family member, your child, gives you the gift of being honest with you and tell you that you've hurt them, that you've microaggressed, that you've offended them, I want you to see this as a gift. Because do you know that there are very few people in your life who will be honest with you? Very few. And especially you as council members, as mayor, mayor pro temp. The higher up you go, the less likely you are to have people who will be honest. And say, you know, Mr. Mayor, that is not the best idea. You know, people are afraid, there's power there. And um, do you know that people will watch you have a boogie in your nose half the day and never tell you? Seriously. Tell, think about the times you've done it, like, oh, they need to do something about that, but I'm not gonna tell them, I don't wanna embarrass them and they'll figure it out sooner or later. Most people want to know that. You know, they, they, they want to know, but people won't tell you the truth. So when they work through all of that that I told you about and are finally able to say, Val, I know you didn't mean it. But the other day, when you told me that you were afraid that I would get upset because you know how black women are, that was really offensive to me. Because you grouped me and I thought you knew me better. By the time I say that to Val, I've worked that through a million ways. How many times have you been on the phone with someone who hurt your feelings but you didn't tell them because you don't want to hurt their feelings? Gosh, that really bothered me, but I don't want to tell them because I don't think they meant it. Then if I tell her she hurt my feelings and then she's gonna get upset and then I'm gonna get upset. And we just don't say it. So when someone gives you this gift, accept it, but don't make it about you. How do we make it about us? I didn't mean anything by it. I'm so sorry, that wasn't my intention. You are so sensitive. And then one of the major ways is crying. Oh my goodness, that's not what I meant, I promise you, that's not what I meant, I would never hurt you. And now the victim is comforting you. And that's not okay. So I'm gonna ask you to sit with your discomfort, just be uncomfortable. And it's not easy. It really isn't. Because most of us are not in this game to hurt anyone. I mean, have you ever found out you really hurt someone and it was like the worst thing ever? Like, that was not what I meant. I have a girlfriend, I have severe allergies and I have a girlfriend whose son is allergic to peanut butter. And he had a birthday and I sent over a cookie, edible cookie thing, and it had peanut butter cookies in it. And she goes, Rosemarie, I'm so shocked from you because you have such severe allergies, you carry an EpiPen too. And I, she said, so when it came from you, it did, I, it didn't occur to me to check it because I knew you are sensitive to this. I am so sorry, I had to sit with that, that could have cost this child his life. My carelessness, but I'm so thankful she told me. She could have said, oh, well, you know, Rosemarie didn't mean anything and at least she sent a gift, but she needed to let me know that I actually put her child's life in danger. And I said, you are right, I can't believe I was that careless. And I'm owning that. And now I know. And I just want you to forgive me. And I, and even right now, I just wanna cry, I want your baby to forgive me because that could have been horrible. Horrible. And I even said, you don't have to forgive me right now because it's too raw and it's too scary. Let's check back later. And of course, we got through it, but I had to sit with that discomfort. Sit with it because victims of microaggressions can be angry and defensive, have low self-confidence, develop low self-esteem. And there are studies that show that microaggressions can lead to fear and distrust. Have you ever had a constituent who just didn't trust you? That didn't trust that you would do what you said you were gonna do? And it could be because, not because of who you are, but this lifetime of microaggressions. So what's gonna make you any different from everyone else? So just be aware of that. But we can prevent microaggressions, especially at the city council level. So how do we do that? First, we practice cultural humility. We're smart and powerful and you have these great positions and you are in charge of a lot. And it could lead you to think you know everything. But cultural humility helps us to remember we don't. When I was at the state with a ninety million dollar budget, I did consult with people about how that money would be spent, but there was one demographic that I left out that I cringe thinking about it. And it was parents. Here I was making decisions about other people's children and never invited parents to the table. Cultural humility, it, it challenges us to become the student, to learn about those we serve, to learn about them from a cultural perspective, suspending judgment. I call it
We have about fifteen minutes.
How many?
Fifteen.
Okay, great. So it's the practice of not knowing. And, and this is what I call it, practice not knowing. Suspend your judgment, suspend everything you think you know and let people tell you what they want you to know from a cultural perspective. There was a teacher named, there is a teacher named Kyle Schwartz from Denver Public Schools. And she created an assignment that was the best assignment I'd ever seen on cultural humility. And it was called, um, I Wish My Teacher Knew. And she sent this assignment home with her students and said, complete this sentence and bring it back the next day. And these are some of the responses. I wish my teacher knew I don't have a friend to play with me. I wish my teacher knew sometimes my reading log is not signed because my mom is not around a lot. I wish my teacher knew I don't have pencils at home to do my homework. I wish my teacher knew how much I miss my dad because he got deported to Mexico when I was three years old and I haven't seen him in six years. What do your fellow council members wish you knew? Do you know some people showed up today and put on a brave face and have dealt with issues you have no idea about? Your fellow council members may be hurting right now. May have friends who have COVID, they have family members who are struggling. May have children who have opioid addiction, may have grandchildren who are suffering because they're online one day and in class the next day. You don't know how people suffer. What do your fellow council members wish you knew? And then what do your constituents wish you knew? What if I never partnered with my police department and didn't allow my son to walk down the street or throughout our neighborhood and just suffered? And, and, and then somehow transferred that fear to him? What do your constituents wish you knew? Do they feel safe? Are they afraid? Things are changing in Wheat Ridge, you have development going on. But you also have people who don't want changes, who don't want the development. You have homeless people, you're, you're becoming more and more diverse every year. Are people feeling safe? What do they wish you knew? So when they share their experiences with you, how do you respond? Do you practice cultural humility? Do you understand that people bring their own experiences and dialogue with you? Are you practicing deep and active listening? Being aware of your body language? Know and own what you don't know? Know your boundaries and know when to ask for help? And then you can also engage in microaffirmations. And these are subtle or apparently small acknowledgements of a person's values and accomplishments. They substitute messages about deficit and inclusion and replace them with messages of excellence and openness and opportunity. But it requires that you listen actively, you recognize and validate their experiences. And then you affirm their emotional reactions. You go, yeah, I see that really upset you. I'm glad you brought that to me. I don't have an answer for you right now, but I hear you and I'll get back with you. So the affirming emotional reactions is one of the most important things you can do because you acknowledge that this, that your constituents have experienced something exciting or frustrating or hurtful. Not only your constituents, your children, your partners, your, your, your family members. You can use this with, and so what do you do when you actually witness a microaggression? Now, you're council members, you're from different walks of life. We have different genders and probably different economic levels and different party affiliations. I don't know enough about you, but you've probably had some microaggressions at the city council, council level. So what do you do about this? When you witness it, first thing you have to do is create a treasure chest of responses. What does this mean? Remember when you saw Dr. Gilliam Water in that moment, not know what to say or do and then he missed it? You have to know what you're going to say before the opportunity ever comes up when you have to. Today, tonight, tomorrow, develop ways of responding so that you have it in your back pocket and pull it out when you need it. First, be someone who will speak up. Be the person who will speak up against bigotry, against microaggressions and not let hate have the last word. You have to develop these ready responses, that treasure chest that will work in a variety of moments. What can you say in the moment? What can you put in your treasure chest that will work in a variety of situations? First, that offends me. You know what? I don't find that funny. Or I'm really surprised to hear you say that. That disrupts it in the moment. You can speak up against bias in a simple, straightforward manner. Can you tell me what you mean by that? Or why would you say something like that? I saw my daughter do this beautifully. When she was somewhere, we were shopping and some, one of the kids, like teenagers from high school said, oh, that's so gay. And she turned around and said, excuse me, what, what do you mean by that? And the kids are like, what? She goes, what, what did you mean by that? Is your friend gay or? No, they're not gay. She said, but you said that's so gay, what is, what do you mean? Well, I just made that stupid. She said, well, why don't you say that? Because gay people may not feel safe here. So it's just interrupting it in the moment. But why would you say something like that? What point are you trying to make? I, I don't think you're meant to be hurtful when you said that or when you use that word, it really feels like a put down. Or, you know, we said that our meetings would be a safe space. And when you say things like that, it doesn't help people to feel safe here. I do want to say that there's a difference between calling in and calling out. Um, you can disrupt a microaggression in the moment, but you may not want you to embarrass each other at a meeting. So this is just a Rosemarism and Rosemary suggestion. But there are times you have to disrupt it, but you can say, and you have to have the agreement if you use the strategy, ouch. So someone's talking and you just say, ouch. That's a s- signal to stop what you're saying. You are microaggressing and then follow up with that person later. So just kind of think about how that's used. Um, I actually use it in my own marriage. When my husband tells me I'm sarcastic, go figure. And I can be, but you know, for years I didn't see it. I didn't see it. And then once I saw it, it's like, I don't want to be that person. I didn't realize I was that sarcastic. And we developed that strategy. I said, babe, when I, when I'm coming across sarcastic, can you just say ouch? And then I know in that moment that I did it. And it was very helpful. And that was about ten years ago and we've not had that issue in a very long time. And some of the strategies now is to interrupt, speak up. When it happens, interrupt it. And then you can question, you know, why did you say that? What do you mean? Tell me more. You can educate. Give the benefit of the doubt. Remember at the beginning, our guidelines, speak the truth and love, be kind. Because hate isn't behind all hateful speech. Sometimes ignorance isn't work and lack of exposure to diverse populations. There are so many things that are changing all the time. Like my friend says she's Chinese and how does she become Asian? Now I know not to refer to her as Asian. You're just gonna make mistakes and we have to be forgiving. So you, we can educate each other and talk to each other about things. I was talking to a person right before I came on the call and he said, um, yeah, we, we're dealing with the Latino X population. And I said, oh, you may want to know that it's Latin X or Latino or Latina. He goes, oh, I didn't know that, no one said it, I've been using that term forever. People want to know so you can educate. Some people don't know the negative be, um, power behind certain words. And give people the benefit of the doubt and allow them to make a change. This is something I want to impress upon you. The grace and space to grow. I'm gonna make a mistake, but allow me the grace and the space to grow. To grow. Aren't we all growing? We're all in the process of becoming, no one has arrived. And although it's not your job to educate, it really helps when you can point people in the right direction. So you can echo, you know, when someone says something, you can say, yeah, I understand that. And pay attention and go back to what your promise is. Make good on your promise. This resolution states that racism has no place in our city. That's a promise that you've made to the people who reside in Wheat Ridge. Stay true to that promise. Strive to be the place where all people feel safe, regardless of their race or other characteristics. Um, and all people can raise their children to be safe. And that's really what it's all about. And then have a mechanism in place so that you know if you're fulfilling your promise. How do you know when you've met it? Are there data points you're looking at? Is it feedback? Is it a survey? How do you know when you've achieved your goal of racial equity in Wheat Ridge? And that's it for me with my presentation, five minutes early. Thank you. Any questions at all?
I'm Dr. Allen and, and if you would like to take questions, we'll see if there are any from the, the staff, Ms. Hobbie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Allen. Um, I, I don't have any questions. I just want to say that I, I so greatly appreciate you joining our meeting tonight and, um, and all, all of the information that you brought to us. And I really appreciate all of the personal stories that you shared. And, um, and I know it's kind of hard when you're, when you're sharing your screen, you can only see some of us at a time and you have to go back and forth. But, um, I, I, I really, um, I hope that you saw that a lot, we were all paying attention and, and, um, and we just really appreciate your time. So thank you very much.
Thank you, it's a pleasure. Thank you so much. Keep up the amazing work that you're doing in the city of Wheat Ridge.
Absolutely, Councilmember Nosler Beck and then Ms. Holteem.
I'm just wanted to echo what, um, Councilmember Happy, um, said. But also, um, I'm so grateful that, um, you know, we were able to do this. For once, the Zoom platform is, is a great platform because, um, you know, this, this training was done, um, on, on Zoom and it was recorded. And so this will be available, um, as a resource for the entire city to also use this, um, for, you know, a resident can come back and take a look at the study session and take during this, um, presentation, Dr. Allen. So, um, it was a great, a great experience, um, for me as a council member. And I think everybody in council, like Councilmember Happy said, was really engaged. Um, but I think this, this has legs to it and it can be a great resource for the entire city. So thank you, um, Dr. Allen. You know, you're one of my she-roses, so it's great to have you here.
So much.
Ms. Holteem, did you have your hand up? Okay, oh, I, Ms. Holteem, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo thanks, Dr. Allen, for, um, your, your expertise and your passion and your personal stories. It was, um, a very, the fastest ninety minutes that has gone by in a long time for me. And I really appreciate it. And I, I have a couple of things, then I actually do have a question. Um, I want to thank my peers and city staff for getting us here. I, um, I'm impressed with, uh, how, um, how we've faced this and, and not tried away from it. And we've learned and grown, I've learned a lot. Um, and I'm just, I'm really grateful to be working alongside such, um, dedicated and open and curious people so that we can serve our community better. And I, and I want to thank our community for, um, encouraging us to get here also. I think, uh, we're really fortunate to have, um, very capable and dedicated people in our community who are holding us accountable for, um, for this, this type of process. And so, um, this is, I, I've the, you know, our Hollywood squares of twenty people, but really I'm feeling the presence of an entire community tonight. And, um, I am challenging myself in twenty twenty-one to reach, reach more people, um, so that And, um, I am challenging myself in 2021 to reach, reach more people, um, so that we can broaden our conversation. Um, to that end, Dr. Allen, I'm doing a facilitator training and one of the, um. One of the threads of the training is really how do you in group situations seek out differences? Because that's really one of the ways that we do learn and grow. And I think especially in a community like Wheat Ridge where we are overwhelmingly white Caucasian community. It, I think increasingly marginalizes, um, people who aren't identified in that white space. And I'm just wondering if you could speak a little bit, if, if it's within your, your, your toolbox. About how do you, what are some tips about establishing sort of the, the sense of safety? So that people can seek out those differences, whether, um, it's, you know, from the predominant culture seeking out. Or from marginalized, um, you know, demographics or identities. Finding a sense of safety because I just think that's so key to being able to, um, start developing that type of relationality. That's important for that, that type of constituent relationship.
Thank you so much. I'm so sorry. I don't know the protocol at a city council meeting. Now, if I were at the state, I would.
Please, please go, please go ahead. We, we're not, we're not that formal, so. I'll, I'll call on the council members just to sort of keep the questions in order, but please feel free to answer it.
Okay. Thank you so much. Yes, I love your question. I'll, I'll tell you my experiences. You can tell I'm a storyteller, try to have a story for everything. I moved to Parker, Colorado, out of Los Angeles. And I don't know what kind of information was shared, but within the, uh, the next day or two. I received the most amazing welcome basket. Never had that happen ever. And it had all of the contact information for everything that I would need to know. I don't know if the city of Wheat Ridge does that or if communities do that, but imagine if you did that. Part of your resolution in that basket, we want to make sure you feel welcomed here. Come to our next city council meeting and tell us what you need. So many times we try to, um, figure out on our own what people need. What we really need to do is invite them in. With your town hall meetings, wherever you are, when you're in that community. People of color in predominantly white spaces need a special invitation. Sending out, oh, come, isn't gonna work. It's not gonna bring them there. You've probably experienced that already. In their language, with their name on it, personal invitations. Go after those constituents the same way you would as if you were running for office. You know, that personal, I need your vote. I, this is what I'm gonna do. Do the same thing. I need your input. Please help me go to their churches. Nothing bothers my pastor more than, um, politicians coming during elections. They want to see you throughout the year. So go to where the people are and then ask them what they need. That's gonna be the best thing.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Allen. Yeah, that was a wonderful answer. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Very much. Uh, any other questions? Council, uh, council member Weaver.
Dr. Allen, thank you so much. I, I very much appreciate everything that you spoke about. My question, uh, having had the same experience with, with the, uh, introduced as doctor or not. I, I, I have a question about that and sort of having your voice in identifying and hearing. When, because I, I, having been in that same situation. Is it the job of the person sitting next to you? Or is there a way that, that, that you might have spoken up and said. This is how I would like to be addressed because I, I, I struggle because I, I feel the same way you do. I don't really, I don't really care what people call me, as long as it's not a not nice thing. But it, but it, what it made me think about is sort of, how do we hear other people's voices? And when does one choose to be an advocate versus sort of. I also don't want to cheerlead inappropriately and call out when they don't want to be identified particularly. I don't know if my question makes sense, but I, I was just thinking about it.
All the sense in the world. I was so afraid of time. I didn't, I didn't tell this quick, this story really quickly. I shared that clip with another doctor. I'll call him Doctor Andrews because we're presenting together. And I said, well, this is a clip. I want to talk about it. What do you think? He goes, I'm so shocked by this because Walter is a friend of, for all three of us.
Right.
I'm so shocked. I, he said, but Rosemary, I have to tell you, that has never happened in my presence. And I present with women all the time. That's never happened. And you can't force people to see it. I just said, okay. So we're getting ready to present. They said, I'd like to welcome Dr. Andrews and Rosemarie Allen. Right there at that moment. And he said, oh, I'm sorry, that's Dr. Rosemarie Allen. And the person says, oh, thank you so much. I appreciate the clarification. Then after that, he apologized. He said, Rosemary, it wasn't that I, it never happened. I never noticed. It wasn't part of my awareness. So because I shared that with him, he knew that it was offensive. Um, are you Dr. Weaver?
I am, yeah.
Oh, there, there are gonna be times and situations where you can say that for yourself. He said, you know, I really worked hard for this degree and I really prefer doctor. He left, so I kind of played off, I worked so hard for this. There are other times, like the video I showed where I would have come across as pompous in front of 1,700 people. Oh, I, I couldn't do it. So what does that mean for your colleagues? In those professional situations where other people are referred to by a title, if they don't say Dr. Weaver. Then come to her rescue. You've heard her tonight. You can say, oh, that's Dr. Weaver and, and make that correction. So let people know, especially when you're not in that situation. And then the, another part of your question I heard is that you don't want to be that overbearing ally. Where you're rescuing people when they don't need to be rescued. And, and, and you have to feel that out. I made a big mistake on a plane. There was a doctor, um, a head doctor. M D doctor from Children's Hospital on a plane with me and we've been talking. He was Asian. And we've been talking about something. And, um, when it was time to leave to, for the plane to take off, he had hung his jacket on that. What do you call it? That little table that comes down and you turn the little thingy, you know what I'm talking about? He has jacket there. The flight attendant came over and said, you must put this away. And I'm thinking, no, she's not talking to this guy like this. It's very articulate doctor. And he pulled it down and she took it and she says, I'm putting it up here. And I said, ma'am, he speaks English. He's a doctor and he understands you. You don't have to talk to him, you know, like that. Just speak to him. He, he's fine. It, long story short, I embarrassed him. And he says, I, I would have told her that if, if it bothered me. So he kind of let me know that he did not want me to do that. Um, so we, we do want to be careful not to rescue when people don't want to be rescued because that's part of a superiority thing too. So kind of, kind of, um, ask, I could have said. Should I stop her from talking to you like that or are you okay? But we like to jump in because again, remember I said at the beginning, we're fixers. We want to fix things, but not everyone needs to be fixed. I hope that was helpful.
Yeah, that does help. Thank you. I appreciate it. And thank you again for your, for your time tonight.
Very much. We're, uh, we're just at, at our time, Dr. Dr. Allen. I want to thank you very much for joining us. Very interesting, uh, program that you've put on and, and probably generated more, more questions, I hope, and more thought for us as we go forward. So.
Thank you, Mayor. You asked city council members for having me. I appreciate it.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Let's have a hand for the. Dr. Allen. Uh, we're going. We're going to go to our second item on our, uh, our agenda, but before we do, I'd like to take about, oh, just a, a little shorter than 10 minutes. If we could, uh, take a little break and come back here at eight fifteen, then we will reconvene and have our second item on the agenda.
Now with our second item, which is the Wadsworth Construction Management. Scheme that we have and I'll go to Mr. Goff and you probably. You want to tee this one up for us?
I will. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council and looks like we have Mary Ann. We got everybody on. Mary Ann, you still with us?
Yep.
Thank you. You can help me bring a bring our guest on. Well, good evening, Council. We've reached that transition point in the Wadsworth Improvement Project. Where we're going to be moving from design and engineering to construction. So therefore, some of our staff resources are also going to shift primarily from. Community Development and Engineering who's been heading this up for the last several years. And headed up by Ken Johnstone. But moving to Public Works and Construction Management, which is currently headed up by Greg Knudson. However, Ken and his staff will still be actively involved, of course, as the construction. Process proceeds to make sure that the project is being constructed as designed. So tonight, we'd like to give you an update on our construction management plan for the Wadsworth Project. But first, Council did specifically ask to bring this forward to a study session to talk about this. And also asked that we reach out to CDOT to confirm what their role will be in. The construction management for this project. We did receive a statement from Neil Retzer. He's the Region One Resident Engineer. And that statement is in your staff memo, but essentially CDOT. Doesn't have the capacity to manage a project of this size right now. They are. Over booked essentially with with their own projects and they do prefer that. Locally agent, local agency sponsored projects such as this. Are managed by the local agency or in this case Wheat Ridge. So. CDOT will still definitely provide significant oversight for the project and. Will partner with us in the project and we do, the city does have an IGA with with CDOT that lays out. Those different responsibilities of the city and CDOT and that was also in your packet this evening. In addition, we're going to continue our partnership with AECom. To provide construction management and project oversight for the project. Which they've done for three of ours to E bond projects over the last couple of years. So. I know you're familiar with AECom and we do have representatives this evening. From AECom and they're going to walk you through what our construction management plan is. But before we do that, I would like to ask, we have Ken Johnstone and Greg Knudson on the call and. See if they have anything to say before we turn it over to AECom. Greg or Ken? Think you're on there. Do I see? There you are. Ken, you got anything to add?
You're muted.
You're muted, Ken.
Thanks. Thanks, Patrick. I don't see Greg on the call, but I think you accurately characterized it. And the questions came up at the September 21st study session and it was actually really good timing. Regarding the construction management and what CDOT's role would be and. Whether they'd want a greater role, given that this in fact, the CDOT right away. So it was a good time to reach out to them, but we, at the same time, were actively engaged in kind of looking at what that. Relationship and construction management format would look like with AECom. We already knew under the terms of the two E umbrella contract that we were going to be using. AECom along with city staff managing that contract. As our construction management representative up in the field and they would be the engineer responsible in charge. So it was really good timing for the question to come up. So we're glad to provide this this update tonight and we have the. Several people from the AECom team, including their communications person who will be the point person for. Communicating with residents and critically business owners on the corridor. So we're, we think we've got a good plan of attack in terms of a structure of oversight. Between AECom and city staff and I think Steve McQuillan with AECom. Is going to kick it off with a PowerPoint, but Greg, I see Greg is on the screen now as well. So I don't know if he has any additional comments that he might like to add.
Well, thank you, Ken. Good evening, Council and Mayor. Just briefly, in addition to the packet of information that you received. The details, what we're going to be talking tonight, I would just like to emphasize the importance. Of the project and the transition that we're talking about. From the design negotiation phase of. Community development into the public works phase with construction services. Just to give you, I also wanted to give you a quick background for myself. So that you know that. I've been with the city since 1990. And started in the engineering division in public works as it was then. And have been involved with numerous projects. During that time. And since then, I've been on the operation side since about 2004. And prior to that, I worked for two large cities doing construction related projects. On a major scale. So with that. I also wanted to mention Russ Higgins is part of our construction services team. And his wide variety of experiences, especially at the. The state level, which brings a wealth of experience to this project too. So. This whole team that we're putting together, I feel very confident about. And I'm very excited about where we're going and getting this project started. Russ, I don't know if you want to add something to. Your background for the group or? We'll just go to.
Yeah, we can go on in. Like I said, I've been here 15 years with the city managing construction strictly then and. Yeah, I came out of a design background. I was with the highway department for 13 years. Worked our way through the highway department and then was a construction engineer managing 50 plus million dollars worth of projects a year. With the with highway department and yeah, and have really enjoyed my time here at the city and looking forward to this project.
Okay, with that, we'll turn it over to Steve and his team with AECom.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. Let me see if I can pull up our presentation here. Sorry. Can you all see that?
Yes. Yep, maybe a little. Can you go? There you go.
And can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thanks Greg and Ken and thank you, Mayor and City Council for. Allowing us to present tonight. We understand how important this project is to the city. It's in the works for many years. It's a high visibility project. And we want to make it successful and we're just excited to be a part of it. So as Ken said, I'm Steve McQuillan. I'm the. Program manager for the the city's bond program. So yeah, I've been involved for about three years with the various projects under the bond program. Been with AECom for about 23 years now. Also with me tonight is Kevin Coleman. He's our construction manager for the Colorado offices. And he's going to speak a little bit about the actual project. What we see as the important issues, project organization, a little bit of our background. And then we wanted to touch on the CDOT local agency process. And also with us, we have Kate Binning. Who's our public information manager. And she wanted to speak to some of our ideas on public communication approach. So. I think. Ken mentioned it already. AECom, we were selected by the city in 2017 to serve as the. Construction manager program manager for the bond program. So we've been involved in the. The Clear Creek Crossing project and Ward Station. And now with Wadsworth. And our scope is mainly support to the city. Design reviews, development reviews. We're doing the construction management for the Clear Creek Crossing and. Hope to bring some of the same staff and some of our experiences over to the Wadsworth project. We, we were involved with Wadsworth, like I said, for past few years. We've done all the design reviews. We're familiar with the project and. We actually were involved with Mark Westberg and Russ. A couple of years back, we did a value engineering study for Wadsworth. And. Spent a good, a good part of a week sequestered in the city council chambers with a. A group of folks from CDOT in the city and brainstorming. Ideas to add value to the project and actually it came up with about $5 million in savings. For the project as part of that process. We have the resources to offer to the city. We, one of the larger firms, we have about 800 folks here in Colorado. All disciplines, water, environmental, transportation, construction. And Kevin Coleman, he leads up our construction management group. He has a staff of 20, construction management personnel that report to him that are available for the project. And one thing I wanted to point out is a lot of our folks are former CDOT construction. Employees, including Kevin. And I think that's important because. CDOT is such a major partner on this project. They're bringing the money to the table. They're administering the federal funds. And they have got very specific processes for. Pay applications and all kinds of protocols that we have to follow for a local agency project. So we're. We're happy to have some experienced staff on our team. So with that, I will ask, turn it over to Kevin. And ask him to speak a little bit about the project organization.
All right. Thanks, Steve, and thanks, City Council for having us here. So you can see a preliminary org chart here. The the green staff. Is the city staff, including Russ Higgins, who'll be managing this project in construction. On the left and the orange is Neil Retzer from CDOT who was previously mentioned. He'll be providing local agency oversight. We have an established relationship with him, having worked. A handful of construction projects with him. And the middle, you see Chad Phillips, who just happened to be out this week, so he couldn't leave the presentation and stuck me with it. But he'll be our point of contact for AECom during construction and will manage the rest of the project team. Take it to the next slide. Next, next slide. There you go. So who are we proposing on the project? We have Chad Phillips, who will be the project engineer. He's an experienced construction manager with 20 years of construction and engineering experience. He's previously managed 120th and Wadsworth Boulevard reconstruction project for Westminster, which is also a local agency project. And he's currently managing the Denver led service line replacement project, which is replacing something like 64,000. Lead service lines over the next 15 years at the cost of roughly $64 million a year. And then Rich McCloud will be our assistant project engineer. He's a seasoned construction manager with 42 years of experience, including 30 of those at CDOT. He was actually one of my mentors when I first graduated college and we worked together on a CDOT local agency project for the city of Boulder. Which was actually a similar size, similar scope to what we're doing on Wadsworth. Project included a full depth concrete reconstruction of Broadway, starting on the urban section near the Pearl Street Mall. And moving north to the more suburban area. We've also teamed with three other firms to assist on the project. Benish will provide additional construction inspection and they're a national engineering firm that's just shy of about 1,000 people and have 41 people here in Colorado. GeoCal is a local materials testing, GeoTech and construction management firm of approximately 35 employees and provide materials testing. And then we have Merge Resource Group and Kate Binning. Who you'll hear from in a few minutes and she'll be providing public information communications and she has a background in both transportation engineering. And communications with extensive experience, both with CDOT and municipal projects. Next slide. So what kind of project experience do we have? We're currently working on a, on the construction management of the E470 widening project with Benish. Project widened an eight mile stretch of highway from Quincy Avenue to I-70 and. And includes a lot of the same elements that we have here in Wadsworth and a cost of about $99 million. And you'll recognize the picture, maybe not recognize the picture, but recognize the project, Clear Creek Crossing. We're currently providing one full-time senior construction manager and the previous met, previously mentioned Chad Phillips is a part-time project engineer, responsible engineer in charge. Though no CDOT funding was part of the project, it has helped us build a relationship with CDOT and then the the local Wheat Ridge staff. On the bottom, we have the Pearl Parkway Junction Place project, which were both managed by Rich McCloud. And they reconstructed the roadway and an adjacent bridge to Pearl Parkway. Both of those were local agency projects similar to this and they required the CDOT documentation and coordination. Next slide. So we we recognize the biggest concerns for all of you in the city are going to be the cost, quality and the impact to the public, the local home and business owners. So we're going to partner with the contractor to manage the construction budget and schedule. And verify that the construction is being built toward to the plans and specs. And coordinate all the phasing and business access to minimize disruptions. Our project staff. Have experience on a large construction projects, both in the CDOT world and in a local agency project. So we have. The requisite understanding of managing both large projects and federally funded work similar to this. Between AECom, Benish and GeoCal, we have nearly 70 CM staff local to Colorado and hundreds of designers. So. If there were a change for any reason, we have the staff available to adjust seamlessly. AECom, we have a strong focus on safety on all of our projects and the big focus on this project will be providing the traveling public with a safe construction zone. With consistent, easy to follow traffic control. It's like, that can be a big struggle on a lot of projects. And on a COVID front, it's definitely affected our business and how we in our industry operate. But we've developed a company-wide policy to minimize exposure of project staff. And that's done by generally following the CDC guidelines and holding meetings virtually similar to this. Next slide. So the slide slides is a little bit redundant to the previous page, but AECom's transportation CN group, the group that I run is built. Around providing support on large federally funded work. We have a number of ex-CDOT staff, as Steve mentioned, including Richard McCloud, our assistant project engineer. And we understand the process needed to successfully document and deliver a CDOT local agency project to ensure that all federal and Dr. Cog funding is going to be received on the project. We have a lot of built-in relationships and our infrastructure built in such a way that. We can manage a project of this size that that involves locally to see oversight. Next slide. So this slide shows some of the key elements we have highlighted on the project. On the top left is a picture of a continuous flow intersection constructed on our Woodman Parkway project in Colorado Springs a couple of years ago. Wadsworth, as you guys probably know, is going to have a similar intersection constructed at 44th Avenue. And we will work with both Kate and the contractor to make sure that the public is prepared for the incremental changes that the intersection's construction progresses. It's going to be a new experience for most of the people driving it. So we want to make sure that everybody's prepared. On the top right is a figure I pulled from the Wadsworth plans. And the biggest risk of any construction project is what you can't see underground. And this particular project on Wadsworth is a very, Wadsworth is a very dense utility corridor. So if any utility issues arise, we'll we'll work very proactively with both Russ. And the contractor to help provide quick solutions to avoid delays or or any additional monies being needed. On the bottom left, you'll see a picture of a side-by-side case on wall, pretty similar to what we're going to have on Wadsworth. There's a variety of fairly complex retaining wall types that'll be built near the I-70 interchange. And those are all all elements that we have a lot of experience managing. In the middle, you'll see the arched facade building. I'm not sure what exactly to call it. It's just south of 47th Avenue. We recognize that both the design and construction concern for a variety of properties on the project. And we'll work with the contractor to ensure that no excess disruption is made. At those properties during construction. And the last photo is of Wadsworth looking north towards my favorite fast food restaurant, Raising Cane's. The tentative plan is to construct the east side of the new concrete roadway followed by the west side. And this provides or presents a bit of a problem is you can't immediately drive on freshly placed concrete. So we'll be working with a contractor to maintain signage. And provide continuous accesses to all the businesses and homes through the area because that'll be. A big concern and a hot topic if if it's, if we fail to do that. So. With that, I'll pass it off to Kate to discuss our public information approach.
Thank you, Kevin, and good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Can you hear me all right? Give a little wave. All right, very good. So our team is looking forward to providing the city with public relations support on the project. We've had initial discussions with Sarah Spalding. Hi, Sarah. I saw that you joined the meeting as well. And the project management team to identify the best strategies for communicating this next phase of the project. So really, we're focused on being proactive. We really want to do everything we can to make sure to get the word out upfront, especially to the businesses along the corridor. We know we're going to have impacts and that will be a major. Point for us to communicate and continue to communicate throughout the project. We're really talking about a partnership between city staff and the construction management team. To lead the outreach on this project and I am confident we'll be able to deliver meaningful. Outreach program for your constituents. outreach program for your constituents. Also, obviously, the the future selected contractor is also a big part of the equation. And that's where I'm happy to be involved. I'll personally be able to interface with the contractor and with the construction management team. You may have heard Kevin mention, I have an engineering background. I'm also a civil engineer. So it's kind of this interesting being able to take hopefully technical information and communicating that well to the public. You know, I'll really be there at the table and understand during weekly progress meetings and as needed, what we need to communicate to the public, what the schedule is and what those major impacts are. We'll prepare key messages and simple graphics to get our points across. Next slide, if we could. And we'll be using several tools that the city already uses. We'll make sure to leverage the assets that you have in place with the city website, WhatsApp, Wheat Ridge. We know with a project like this, we're going to attract some attention probably from the media at times. So we'll want to have a good game plan of how to address those media requests and really encourage media participation when appropriate. And also along the lines of appropriate communication, we know that social media will of course be reactive when we need to, but be proactive and use all the different platforms that that the city uses to get the word out, making sure we're using official city channels. And that we're also as a team are very cohesive on who is speaking on behalf of the project. That's really important. With a project this size, having clear delineation of how information flows will be be very important. I've experienced that in past projects for sure. So we're available to meet virtually or in person to support staff. And, you know, to support the city and really getting the word about out about the project, but also responding to issues. So I won't go through the list of items on the screen, but just a whole host of different means and methods that we have to communicate to the public. Now, on the next screen, there's some additional things that we'll be doing with this project. Really specific to this project and one of the first things that I hope that you would use for your constituents and to help all of us out is really a project hotline and email. You know, we'll be publishing or we'd like to publish as part of our approach point of contact and really the first number to call. And we'll have that hotline and email and that'll go directly to me. So name, name to a face here, I'll be the one answering those calls and then kind of directing traffic, so to speak, as needed and make sure that the most appropriate folks on the team are addressing those questions or hopefully in most instances, I'll be able to handle that. Other things we've learned are great tools, text alerts, when we have something immediate that we need to get out there, that might be a major traffic impact, you know, having that ability with a text alert, not to be burdensome, but just really using it at focus times, weekly updates. And also with the state highway, I have a lot of experience working as a public information manager on large state projects. So there's some additional requirements that we'll have for notification, including weekly lane closure reports and really interfacing well with the C dot communications team. So I'm fully on board and prepared to do that. And ultimately, we expect that we're going to be building relationships out there. Not everyone is going to be happy to see this project. But we are moving into the next phase. And we expect to have direct conversations and build relationships with the adjacent businesses. We're open, we're accessible. Ultimately, we'll log and keep track of any issues or concerns that come up. And this will help us keep you informed of the progress, but also of hot topic issues that we're seeing and that you might touch window as well. So I think with that, I could go on a long time, but just leave you with, we have a whole host of tools in our toolbox and we're ready to to build a public information program for the project. So Steve, I'll turn it back to you, I think, for questions.
Okay, thanks, Kate. Thanks, Kevin. Good discussion. I guess we'd like to open it up for any questions that the mayor or council has, or really anyone online. Any comments or feedback you want to offer? We're eager to respond.
Mr. Quicken, thank you so much for your report and your colleagues. It looks like a good good download on our construction management team that's going to move forward. Do we have some questions from council? Council member Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really appreciate the presentation and appreciate the the way you sort of laid out exactly what's happening. And I guess one of my main concerns and it was brought up as one of the key elements regarding utility coordination. As I understand it, currently the Wheat Ridge Water District, for example, had an expectation of spending about thirty thousand dollars in design and they're currently at about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in design work relative to certain change orders and the way the processes come to this point. So I guess, you know, when it comes to the utility coordination, how can we work with those partners to make sure they're not spending additional sums of money on future change orders?
That's, that's a great question. Utilities, and I'm sure Kevin will back me up, the utilities on any project, especially a corridor like Wadsworth, they can absolutely make your break here in terms of budget and schedule. And I I can understand it. The utility districts like water districts, they pretty much have an arrangement, I guess, on federal projects that they get reimbursed pretty much for every every nickel they spend. And I think the the key is to get them involved early on, especially you know, they they can spend a lot of money during design, but during construction, they can really they can really spend money. And they're going to want to have their own inspectors out there on site and they're going to want to be reimbursed for all that. I imagine they have utility agreements in place with C dot. You know, to pay for their services. So I think, you know, we need to be smart about when we get them out there and involve them early in the process. And, you know, trying not to waste their time. But try, try to get them on board early as a partner on the project that, you know, that's really, that's really all we can do. Because they have limited resources.
And I guess to that point, the reason that they've expended so much money to this point is because they've been a partner since the beginning and so they've kind of got strung along here. So like at what point do we know that we're ready to go with the utilities so that they don't have to continue to spend additional money on change orders?
Mayor, if I if I could jump in. And 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 Mr. McQuillan, if I could ask you to stop screen sharing so we can see all of the fine people on the on this call or Zoom. I know Mark Westburg, I think, had a very productive meeting about two weeks ago, Mark, with all the utilities to talk about that coordination process. So I think he might be the best one to give us an update on that important coordination matter.
Yeah, we we received a letter from the Wheat Ridge Water Board and and we've been working on a response to that letter. I think that response is probably going to go out tomorrow. There's a letter that that Patrick is sending to the board. But but, you know, the 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 gist of that letter is that this has been a, it's a big project. It's a complicated project and we've 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 spent a lot of money on design. I'm going to be coming to council on the fourteenth to ask for some more money to spend on design to get our our phase one and bid alternate plans ready to to go out to bid as a as a partial project instead of the full project. And and the reason is it's a it's a bit complicated project. We had we had planned on putting the storm sewer on one side of the road and 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 that we had that all designed and and we had shared that information with Wheat Ridge Water and they they had that designed too. And then as we started to look at the construction phasing, we realized that wasn't going to work with all the other things that are going on in the corridor. And it's it's a challenge in a project like this because both Wheat Ridge Water and Wheat Ridge Sanitation in order to take advantage of some huge cost savings they're going to have by rebuilding some of their lines during our project or replacing their lines in Wadsworth while we're doing our project. Because that way they don't have to pay for separate traffic control. They don't have to pay for the demolition of the pavement. They don't have to restore the pavement. It's all going to be done as our project proceeds. So they're 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 going to see some huge savings over what it would cost them to replace these lines if they were doing that independent of our projects. That's why we we had the idea of partnering with them very early in this project to get them involved. And, you know, I mean, we got them involved too early because we didn't have all of our things figured out yet. So the storm sewer was on one side, we moved to the other side, then we had to move some other things around. So it's been a necessarily iterative effort and and as with all things underground, you've got to sort of keep the old stuff in place while the new stuff is being built and until it becomes active and accepted, then you can switch the stuff over. So storm sewer is a little more forgiving than sanitary and water are and water in particular, because you can't just you know, start hooking up people to the new line. It didn't have any water in it yet. So it's it's been a challenge for all of us to sort of figure out the phasing, but we've we've gotten there and we've gotten it figured out now. And I think with what we're proceeding forward with, we're we're finally on a path now at at, you know, near the end of the project of knowing where everything's going to go, but we're still moving things around at times because we find something else that's in the way or find something else that needs to be changed. It's just it's a really big, as as Steve said in his presentation, he showed that utility diagram. This corridor is full of stuff. And trying to trying to get a bunch of new stuff in there while keeping the old stuff active is a real challenge. And we've been working with the folks at Martin and Martin to to figure a lot out and and we think we've got it all figured out now. And so we're we're all charging down that path and and these things, these things do cost. But I do hope that that by having those, both those utilities during the work with us is going to be saving them a lot of money in the long run.
That's all. Questions from council or Mr. Urban, did you have a follow on? No. Okay. Additional questions from council, Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering, this is an agreement between C dot and Wheat Ridge. And do we really, do we have enough personnel to actually manage the construction of this project?
Yeah, I'll answer that, Kevin. Thank you. But
Sure.
That that was the purpose of of this presentation this evening was to lay out kind of the org chart of what personnel we're bringing to the project and AECOM acts as a staff extension essentially, because no, we don't have all the staff in house. And we don't across many departments. And when we do bigger projects, we bring in third parties to partner with us. And so we're we're confident that with AECOM that we'll have the right amount of staff needed.
Well, my concern is it's not about managers, but it's about supervision. When we've got all kinds of things that are underneath Wadsworth Boulevard, okay. My experiences, and I know that C dot wasn't involved in this, was the corners construction at Thirty Eighth and Wadsworth. The road was dug up on Thirty Eighth Avenue. And that was going east. A steel plate was put on the road. There was no buffer. There were no cones, no signs, anything. I hit that going thirty five miles an hour. That thing stands up like three inches at least up off the road. My car was never the same. And I called the city about it and I said, what is going on? Why is this there? And the answer was, we don't have enough personnel to be on every project. I want to make sure there's personnel supervising what's going on in Wadsworth, whatever is going on so that people are informed. It's a safety issue and you know, we got enough people that are working here. I I would hope that they'd be out there helping the traffic and having enough signs and things to make citizens aware that things are dug up and all that kind of stuff. I mean, this isn't a fault, it's a concern.
Nope, and it's a concern. Well heard. And and again, that's why we're bringing a professional firm like AECOM on board because they have experience, as they mentioned in their presentation, exactly on what your concerns are. Apologize about the Thirty Eighth Avenue project. I'm not sure what happened there. But but yeah, that's something that my expectations are that those types of things won't happen on Wadsworth.
And this is also a two year project, correct?
Probably, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question about looking at the org chart, about how many FTEs would we expect that AECOM would be contributing to the project? I realize that not every person is a full time person, but from an FTE perspective, about how many people are joining?
So we'll we'll have a project engineer, an assistant project engineer, two inspectors, a full time tester, and then we'll have some other part time folks like Kate, who will be a little less than half time. So I guess five five full time people on the ground on a daily basis and then support otherwise.
And how much do we expect this to cost the city over the course of the two years of the project? For all of these services, including the public information program?
I, you want to take that, Steve?
I don't. I don't think I have the answer to that. Yeah, I'd have to follow up. I I don't mean to cop out on you, but I don't think we're we're negotiating our contract and our scope with Mark and Russ and the city as we're going to twenty twenty one. So I'm sorry, I don't have an exact figure for you.
What what we currently showing the construction budget is about two million dollars for the two year period, about a million dollars for both years or or something like that, depending on when we start it may. But it's not starting construction till about June. It'll probably shift a little bit, but we're showing about two million dollars is our rough guess of what that's going to cost.
So it's two million dollars for two years with the work for five people?
That's that would be for for everything that's going to be involved from the AECOM side. So that'll be their, you know, Steve acting as a program manager, Kate doing things and and all the other things that are happening. So that would also include the cost for the tests that all have to be done. So that's that everything sort of construction management related is not just those five people. It's everything else that's involved in that is what we're looking at for the two million dollars.
Okay. And then one more question I had on page two of your memo, point number four, it says the city usually spends ten to fifteen percent of project budget on construction oversight. That seems like an awfully high number. What is, what's typical that we would see for construction oversight?
You know, that's a that's a historical figure that on the the federal aid projects that we've had since I started working here thirteen years ago. That ten to fifteen percent is has been the sort of the running number. Right now, the the two million dollars represents about ten percent for the construction oversight. And I think in the men would also mention is that when C dot runs a job, they just budget twenty four percent of the construction budget is going to be for oversight. Just because of the amount of bureaucracy they've got involved and all the things they've got involved on their end. So we actually think we do this for pretty a lot cheaper than they do, which is one of our reasons for wanting to manage the construction because we have a lot more money to spend on things that actually end up on the ground.
And Mark, you had mentioned that by actually using these services, we could actually save some money. So could you elaborate a little bit more on that and how using and or outsourcing project and program management can save us money? Or maybe that was someone else, Greg?
I don't think I said that.
I think he may have maybe referring to Wheat Ridge Water saving money. Was it that comment you heard, Chris?
I I might take a shot at that, Chris. I think one of the things that we've experienced, and I think Russ could probably speak to this as well, is that you know, every project has change orders, right? I mean, the underground utilities are a great example, right? There's a lot of unknowns that you discover once, once you get into the project and and our experience has been that, you know, we take a harder look at approving change orders than perhaps C dot does at times. So that's one of the ways that we think that having our oversight of AECOM can present a cost savings and an efficiency through that that inevitable change order process.
Mr. Miller, you do have more on there? Okay, thank you. Additional questions? We're now in our second year delay with Dr. Cog. Mr. Westburg and I were at the November board meeting and they gave us a a date in the a month or two from now that we needed to have this project out to bid. Is your calendar currently configured so where we meet that date?
Yeah, our current schedule.
Yeah, our current schedule has this advertising on March 1st and the date that Dr. Cog gave us is March 29th. We've got the consultant team targeting March 1st because that gives us about four weeks afloat. And things are just weird out in the world right now. We just don't know what is going to happen with COVID and the surge that it's, it's happening. I know the last time I checked the Jefferson County Health website that over 500 people had died in Jeffco. So it's a big thing. We just don't know what's going to change. I think the biggest, the biggest sort of wild card we've got right now for meeting that schedule is going to be the right-of-way acquisitions. And we're going to come to council. I got to see you for three things next week, by the way, to ask for eminent domain authority on any outstanding properties we still have, just to make sure those, those keep moving forward. Most of those properties, we're negotiating still and negotiating well and agreeably. But, but we're reaching the point that we've got to get decisions made. We may have to do some things that we otherwise wouldn't like to do because we just don't know what's going to happen with the courts. And talking with the city attorney's office, they said, you know, sometimes I turn something in. I get a court date in two weeks. Sometimes it's in two months and it's completely random. It doesn't matter how complicated or simple the case is. And I just, we just don't know what's going to happen with the court system. And by having used eminent domain on some of these properties that we've, we've had to do, we're just not sure how that's going to play in. And we, we sort of have to have those hearing dates scheduled in order to get the conditional right-of-way clearance that we need from CDOT in order to move forward with advertising the project. So that's why we're, we're still targeting March 1st and we're still pushing really hard on all fronts to try to make all this happen. Just because we don't know what's going to happen in the next three months.
Thank you.
So the answer is yes.
For our staff or AECOM? Any, any more presentation, presentation points that any of the team need to make or?
I think that's it.
We just start work on this item.
I think that's it. That's it. But thanks for, for having us and thanks for the feedback and.
Okay. Well, we, we appreciate you coming and talking with us. I know that the council and our constituents are going to want to have close communication on the project. And, you know, in addition to the costs and the quality and the impact on business, the schedule on this is all going to be important. So it's, you know, it's a project that, you know, that our city needs, needs a great, a great project. We're looking forward to having that. So, and I'm sure that council joins me in saying that whatever we can do to make this project go smoother and at a better project, we'd, we'd like to be able to do that. So thank you all very much.
And sorry, Mr. Mayor, before I get kicked off the meeting here, can I do a shameless plug for a Clear Creek remapping project open house that's happening on Wednesday night at six o'clock? It's going to be a virtual meeting that the Mile High Flood Control District is, is sponsoring, is hosting. If anybody wants an invitation, I can send one to you, but I just have to take this opportunity to do a shameless plug for the Wednesday night meeting. It's been three years coming, but it's finally happening, folks. We're getting our new maps going on Clear Creek.
Okay. Thank you very much. Send me a link to that meeting, please. And you might just make that available to our council, council members also. Thank you, Mr. Westburg. All right. Well, thank you very much. That will conclude item number two for us. Thank you all for joining us. We will now go to staff reports.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think we have anything else this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Elected officials reports and we'll go with a show of hands. Who has something for us tonight? We'll go with Ms. Holtein and then Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank city staff for their incredibly quick turnaround to open up the applications for the third round of business stabilization. I was just incredibly impressed. We met on Monday night and the applications opened on Wednesday. And so I just appreciate in a holiday week that they gave that quick and serious attention. And I personally talked to a lot of businesses that were really grateful that that happened when it did. And so again, just thank you for a quick turnaround and thanks in advance to council member Urban and others who will be reviewing those applications. It means a lot in our community and it's just something I'm really proud of. So thank you, everyone.
Is that me?
That's you.
Am I? I didn't hear you. Okay. All right. I just want to recognize Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day today. And I salute all the veterans and the military that are out there. And I just want to say thank you. Is that me? I just want to thank District Two for allowing the goats at happiness. They have now been moved, so the goats are safely not at happiness anymore, in case anybody walks by and doesn't see goats. They are now, just in case anybody wants to know, they're in Guy's backyard. They'll be back at the farm in January.
Any other, any other elected officials reports? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to give an update on the business stabilization program. We received about 90 applicants. We'll be reviewing this week and hope to have decisions out by the end of this week.
Any other reports? Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to let everyone know that we've opened up another round of the business tax deferment program for November sales tax. If any businesses out there are feeling the cash flow crunch because of the closures, they can apply to defer their sales tax receipts for November with the city, and that might be a little bit of help. It's not a forgiveness of your taxes by any means, but a deferment and giving you a little bit more time without penalty or interest to pay.
I will mention that Saturday, the December the 13th, we'll be having coffee with the mayor in a virtual format from nine till 10:00. So if you'd like to join us, I'd love to have you there. Anything else? Any, any other announcements we'd like to make? Okay. Well, listen, thank you all very much. I'd like to express once again, our thanks to Dr. Rosemarie Allen for, for her presentation tonight. Very interesting topic and I got a lot out of it and I hope you did also. And we'll keep working on this in our community. So thank you all very much for joining us. We, we will be back here in virtual format next week on the 14th for a regular council meeting at seven o'clock. So until then, have a good week. We'll see you all later. Take care.